Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the 2015-2016 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. Today is April 29th, 2015, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the Aldermanic Budget Process. But before we begin, let us rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic of the world's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice called law and order.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Beer. Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Fontana.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Alderman Genitazio wants to be excused, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Alderman Golden. Alderman Hardeman. Alderman Kubek. Alderman Shaw. Alderman Smith. Alderman Stanford.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
You have ten present, we do have a quorum.
First on the budget hearing schedule tonight will be the Public Library. Page thirty-five in your books, it was moved from four-twenty-three, and the number is four-one-nine-three. Once again, it's page thirty-five.
My name is Chris Angeli, and I'm the Director of the Public Library, and I just want to thank you all for listening to me tonight. I am very glad for this opportunity to speak to you about the library and its budget, and the financial needs that the library faces to not only provide the services that it currently has, but to actually improve upon those services. This year, I've adhered to the mayor's request to hold the budget line, and I've done so while increasing our services. Staff are doing a lot more with the same or less resources, and I think this has been very evident in our increased number of programs, our increased attendance at those programs, our increased daily usage, and our increased circulation statistics. The budget request before you represents a negligible amount. Over last year's budget, only .19 percent, and it only comprises .5 percent of the requested city budget. The majority of that increase is in the form of seasonal temp staffing and contractual increases in our online resources. Our seasonal temp staff are essential for us to provide quality services. Our libraries open just about fifty hours a week. This past year, we've seen a forty percent increase in our door count, a one-hundred-and-sixty-five percent increase in our adult program attendance, and a seven percent increase in the number of Milford resident library cardholders. This would not have been possible without qualified staff working our public desks, freeing up our full-time staff to develop and work on programs with topics as diverse as financial literacy, digital literacy, health and wellness, genealogy, book discussions, career and job assistance, STEM skills, early literacy, and much, much more. In addition to this, our staff have begun several new initiatives, partnering with the Board of Education staff. We've spearheaded a new community reads program called One City, One Story. I've included a bookmark and a little handout bracelet for you all. This program encourages all residents to read, reflect on, and discuss the themes found in the books selected. This year, those themes are kindness, compassion, and empathy. We've also actively been seeking outside funding in the form of grants to implement a new digital media lab or Makerspace. I've included a handout for you on that as well, and I'm happy to report that we will hope to implement that this summer with the assistance of the Milford Education Foundation. I do know, and I've gotten many comments, that libraries should really be just about books and the written word, but truly, the library's core mission has always been to provide information and resources to our community. This access can take the form of a program on how to grow mushrooms or learn about health issues, instruction on how to use a computer, the modeling of early literacy skills for new parents, or yes, even research assistance and access to books. All of that has happened this week. I truly, truly believe we are not just the community's living room, but the community's classroom. Our goal this coming year is to continue increasing our community in civic collaborations and partnerships, to improve services to all residents while maintaining a fiscally conservative budget. I believe we've shown that in both this year and last year's budget request. A vital act of libraries an essential part of a progressive community. Libraries attract businesses, improve residents' lives, and as one of the only institutions that are open to all residents, bind the community together. And we're doing this on less, well, just about one-half of one percent of the total city budget. As I'm here before you talking, I truly understand that some of you aren't aware of all that we offer, and so I do encourage you, and I welcome you to come by, stop by the library for a tour of both our physical and our online resources. And I thank you for your consideration, and I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Is there anyone who have any questions for the library director?
None.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question so much as I have the privilege of being a Aldermanic liaison to the library board, and I say a privilege because we work with a very engaged library board. All of the members are very involved in the day-to-day functioning of it, go on field trips sometimes with Chris, other members of the staff are very thoughtful and creative in their contributions. Part of your job before the budget every year is to enumerate all your many accomplishments, but I have to say, certainly since Chris's tenure, there have been really a lot of leaps and bounds in terms of some of the things that the public library offers. And as you said, Chris, it is a hallmark of a progressive community to have a public library. You know, I think all the money I pay, I say this every year, all the money I pay in federal taxes for the Army or whatever it is, and the state for whatever they do, but when I'm, when we pay for things like public works and sewers, the things that you need, I'm always amazed at the fact that most towns are able to fund, sometimes through various types of endowment that they have in other towns, but we don't have that advantage here. But with what we do have, Chris mentioned a few things, but you know, in the past year or so, we've expanded the relationships with a lot of the outside departments, organizations, both business organizations partnered with the Fine Arts Council. Chris mentioned the One Book, One City program, which is new to Milford. They've done it in many other towns, but that's something that we've brought in. Spearheaded the Makerspace, which I brought up in my report from the library, which is an extraordinary new feature of the library, involves three-D printing, a lot of technological sharing that, as Chris said, instead of just books, you're able to use a lot of new technologies that wouldn't be available to anyone, public school students, any members of the community, young and old. The staff has done a great job in terms of programming, computer classes. We also have the TED lectures now on Wednesday, which is a new thing. I think you've seen that on TV. That's something we do. It's very well attended, very, very well presented every week, and there's a huge, pretty good turnout at lunchtime for those talks every week. I want to also commend the children's department. They've done a number of things, added the Saturday preschool hours, and they have the, what is it with the therapy, the pets for the K through five, the pet classes. These are all new things. And last but not least, the Friends of the Library, the public library really couldn't exist the way it does without the organization, Friends of the Library, that does so much in terms of not only supporting some of the programming, they started the Little Library program. You see the book, the library offering at the railroad station, that's all the Friends of the Library did that, Chris, if I'm not mistaken. They provide financial support for a lot of the speakers and programming we have. So when I say I am honored to be a liaison to the library board, I say that with somewhat understatement. It is a fine group of people, and we are very fortunate to have you as our new library director, Chris, and I want to thank you, and thank you for bringing this in at the same budget. I know it's very difficult to do. That's probably one of the hardest things that you have to do.
It is. You know, we have a lot of enthusiastic staff who are looking to expand our services and trying to do them within the constraints of the budget that we have. It's difficult. I will add just one thing that you said. Our Friends of the Library group do support us financially through all of their volunteer efforts and raising funds because we have no programming line item in our budget. Last year, we had over four-hundred-and-fifty programs. Those programs brought in over eighteen thousand people, all funded through volunteer efforts, not in our city budget. So we really are trying to make do with what we can and ask for support where it is really the most needed.
The new web, the new webpage, the homepage has been redesigned a lot easier to use, I think, and navigate than the old one, the library page, I'm saying.
Yeah, that is part of the city website, but I will say that we've really taken a lead in the redesign of our pages, and Virtual Town Hall has used our page, the library section of the city website, as an example for other library sites setting up.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I want to thank you too as well, Chris, for keeping the budget as even as you did with all the new services that you have added, and as you mentioned, you, many more people came through those front doors and enjoying some of the work that you have done, so thank you so much for that. Anybody have any questions for the library? Alderman Kubek.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Don.
I had heard some, I don't know, rumors about the possibility of having some section dedicated to teens, like a teen center or something like that in the library. Is that correct? Is something like that in the works, or?
We are looking to reevaluate our staffing levels. We did have a recent retirement, and we are looking towards that, yes. Currently, we do not have any staff person completely dedicated to the middle and high school age population, although we do do school visits and welcome those groups into the library. So yes, that is one direction that we're heading in.
But is there going to be like a space, a dedicated space for teens to have programs or hang out, or?
We currently have a small section of the library that has, is a teen area. It is not very well defined, but with the addition of, we have converted our former passport office, the physical space, which will be our digital media lab hopefully this summer, and with some further movement of some of our book stacks and the assistance of public works, we will further define a teen section for the library.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Stanford.
They say that a library is a measure of our civilization. I want to thank you for all you've done and for bringing our library into the twenty-first century, which you have done very well.
Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three questions. One is how well you're doing on the book finds, how well you're doing on the passport, and the Saturday hours. Could you maybe explain a little bit about those three things?
Sure. As you all know, a few years back, the fines and fees for the library were returned to the library rather than the general fund for the purpose of purchasing our e-content. As you may or may not know, the downloadable ebooks are quite a bit more expensive than our regular physical books. We do not have a specific line item in the budget for those, and those purchase our downloadable e-content, which accounts for a percentage-wise, a very high percentage of circulation, if not actually the physical number of circulation. The passport office has had a slowdown financially in recent years. However, it is self-sustaining. It pays for all of its own staffing, all of its own supplies. Saturday hours, I'm not quite sure what you mean about that. We are open on Saturdays. We do close for a few in the summer, so I'm not really sure what you mean about that. We did have limited hours installed on Fridays. We are closed to the public on Friday mornings. Due to staffing issues, it is probably our biggest. To open a building, to open it safely and to provide quality services, we need staff working those desks. You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for the director? Seeing none, thank you, Chris, for that great presentation and answering all the questions for us.
Sure, thank you. I hope to see you at the library.
The next on our list is going to be the Educational Operations, page ninety-four,
You ready?
Ready when you are.
Okey-dokey. I'm Sue Glennon, Chair of the Milford Board of Education. Do we want to introduce ourselves as, I think everybody knows who we are, but maybe just a quick introduction?
Rich Telly, operations officer.
Betty Fieser, superintendent.
Mike Cummings, assistant superintendent.
Sue Kelleher, Director of Special Education.
She doesn't need a microphone. So good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Aldermen on our recommended budget for the 2015-16 school year. I would like to make a few opening remarks, and then I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Fieser, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Rich Telly, Ms. Kelleher. So as you are aware, over the past few years, the Board of Education has been involved in a review of the school system in light of declining enrollment. The decision was made last fall to return to a K-five configuration of our elementary schools, a move that has been widely supported by parents and the community. The budget request before you is largely driven by the needs surrounding this reconfiguration, which will spread all six grades, K through five, over eight elementary schools, and will decentralize pre-kindergarten classes over four schools. It is the board's goal to ensure parity among the schools in programming and utilization of space. In addition, we look to maintain and improve upon the significant strides our school system has realized over the past several years. Last year, I spoke to you of the need to continue the revision of our curriculum and the development of common assessments across grades and disciplines. While there will always be room for improvement, the new and more challenging common assessments have shown growth in math and English language arts at most grade levels. We are excited about some of the new courses that have been added to the high school program of studies, such as app design, computer science, advanced placement psychology, advanced placement art, and advanced placement physics. Our students have risen to the challenge of these rigorous courses. And the number of high school students taking advanced placement courses has more than doubled in the past three years to five-hundred-and-fifty-two this past June, with many students taking more than one AP course. In fact, it was announced last October that Milford ranked first in its district reference group and twelfth in the state out of one-hundred-and-sixteen districts offering advanced placement courses for the number of students who achieved an advanced placement scholar status by the college board. This is an accomplishment we should be extremely proud of. The list of competitive top-tier universities that our students are being accepted to continues to expand, and it's very impressive. Villanova, Yale, Cornell, Carnegie Mellon, UCLA, NYU, Boston College, Penn State, Case Western Reserve, Rensselaer Polytech, US Coast Guard Academy, Colby, and UConn's eight-year pre-med program, just to name a few. And in some cases, students are choosing between schools such as these because they have been accepted to more than one. Additionally, over the past several months, the board has enjoyed demonstrations by elementary and middle school students on the use of smart boards and tablets in their coursework, and the development of computer programming apps at the high school level. Our goal to utilize technology to strengthen the learning of students is taking hold. With regard to the app design course, Milford is one of only thirty pilot sites across the entire United States. There are twenty-two sites in Connecticut alone with two in Milford. Both of our high schools, Jonathan Law and Foran, are pilot sites. And this will be an advanced placement level course in the 2016-17 school year. We have also begun an internship pilot program for high school students, which will be expanded in the coming years, and middle school students can now earn up to three credits towards high school graduation. At the elementary level, new reading and math curriculum are increasing students' abilities to engage in more complex work. Literacy and numeracy coaches have supported daily professional learning for teachers as they change their instructional practices to meet new demands. At the pre-K level, it is our desire to see all classrooms obtain accreditation by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. This is a rigorous process that includes ten program standards with specific criteria attached to each, and will ensure that our pre-K programs provide the best learning experiences for young children by meeting national standards of quality. Lastly, at all levels, there is continuous use of staff, student, and parent surveys to identify and improve the educational and social environments of our school buildings. The budgets you have supported over the last few years laid the groundwork that helped achieve these gains. It is of utmost importance that we have the resources to build on them as we continue to raise the bar for students and staff. I hope you will recognize the board's commitment in bringing before you a budget that truly reflects the needs of the school district. So we'll now share with you the major points of the proposed budget, where we found savings and where we found savings within the district, the existing budget to cover the costs, and then we can answer any questions that you might have. So I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Fieser.
Thank you, Mrs. Glennon. Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen. Mayor Blake. Mr. Redutti, how are you? So I am going to take you through some of the specifics, the major requests that we are making in the budget, and also through the savings that we found within the budget to offset a lot of our requests. So you have in front of you a two-page synthesis or summary of our major budget requests, and the second page is our savings. So I'm going to move through that. We thought that this would be the best way to proceed, to give you a handle on the major costs, and again, the savings themselves. So as Mrs. Glennon indicated in her opening remarks, the elementary reconfiguration is the largest piece of our budget. It is the biggest and most comprehensive work that we're engaged in in preparation for the next school year, and I'm going to take you through these costs. You will see immediately that the cost for the elementary reconfiguration is a little under $2 million. So let me begin with what that involves. A major portion of the cost will be for more teachers, both regular education teachers as well as more specialists. And you may immediately say, would, why would there be a need for more teachers? The simplest way that I can explain it to you, we use the term "economy of scale." So right now, every one of our grade levels exists in four school buildings. We're talking kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth. They all exist within four school buildings. So if we took a typical grade, for example, if we took grade two, and we assumed that there were four-hundred grade-two students, then in four buildings, that amounts to the equivalent of one-hundred students per building. One-hundred students, grade two, in an elementary school would cause us to put five sections in the building to cover the one-hundred kids, twenty students in a classroom. So you have five sections of grade two in four buildings. That's twenty sections for four-hundred students. If you take those four-hundred students and you now put them in eight schools, you are talking about four-hundred into eight, which amounts to fifty students per school. Fifty students would mean three sections of students in each school, and three sections times eight is twenty-four sections, as opposed to twenty. It's because you're taking your students and spreading them over more buildings. I'm not suggesting that that's going to happen in every single grade level, but it gives you an idea of what we mean when we talk about economy of scale. Economically, it's more efficient if you have fewer buildings per grade level. When you have more buildings, you need more, you need more staffing. So you can see, we are asking for additional elementary classroom teachers as well as specialists, the specialists particularly in music and PE, and then obviously, we need, we were asking for more strings. That's a real plus in the sense that our strings program is really growing at the elementary level, and I'll drag us for ten seconds and say that this year is the first time we have an orchestra class at both high schools, which has not existed, I don't know when the last time that existed, long, long time ago, but that's because the strings program has really, really grown. So that's our staffing, and as I said, that amounts to, you know, $1,170,000 for the staffing that's being requested under the redistricting or the reconfiguration. We are also asking for four, what we call teacher leaders, and I'd like to take a minute to talk about these teacher leaders. We have four of them right now, so four of our schools currently have a teacher leader, and what we would like is to have, to hire another one or appoint another one for the other four schools. The role of the principal has changed dramatically in public education, and let me give you an example, particularly in the last three years with the new state mandated teacher evaluation plan. Every single teacher in the district has to be observed with a written then observation and debriefing with them to occur throughout the year. That's every single teacher. When we, when we, when we put the teacher leaders in the buildings four years ago, we chose the buildings that had the largest number of staff and students because of the burden that was on them. So I can give you the example of Sean Smith, Principal of JFK, who the first year that the teacher evaluation went in, he did ninety-six observations, which means meeting then with to do the debrief, and then writing them up, which takes anywhere from two to three hours to write up an observation, and submitting it, et cetera. The following year, he had a hundred-and-six observations because he hired some new teachers, and new teachers have even more observations than the tenured teachers. So meanwhile, being in the classroom is absolutely essential on the part of the principal. More and more research is coming out that says beyond the classroom teacher, the principal is the next person who has the greatest influence on student success in the classroom. So the teacher leaders were hired to really ease the burden in a lot of the managerial pieces of the principal's role. So they pick up a lot of the day-to-day kinds of, maybe disciplinary kinds of things, you know, overseeing lunch duty, if there's a particular special program in a school, that they would be the ones who would help to organize that, sometimes meeting with parents over particular parent issues, maybe running or sitting in on behalf of the principal in what's called the student assistance team meetings, sometimes working with a grade-level team, sometimes doing some professional development. So picking up a number of areas which free up the principals to be able to spend much, much more time in the area of much more time in the area of teaching and learning, which is the most essential piece. We have found that the role has been invaluable in the four schools in which they exist, and really has, we've gained much, much more than we even expected. And so now we're moving into eight schools, all K-5, with some of them having PK-5. And so you have principals who are gonna be responsible for a minimum of six grades, and those that have pre-K in them, seven grades. It's a lot. It's a lot of responsibilities. I'm not suggesting there'll be some increase in the supervision and evaluation, but it's also just the number of grade levels, curriculum, that they're responsible for, that they have not been responsible for up to this point. So that's the rationale for the four teacher leaders. We are also then, so that's the staffing piece under the reconfiguration. And then there are a number of one-time expenses to the tune of $427,000 that we need in order to successfully accomplish the reconfiguration. And I'll take you through each of these. So we have the overtime costs. We know that just the move alone and everything that leads up to the move and everything that leads up to then placing everything into the appropriate classrooms is gonna require more custodial staff and more maintenance staff. We also put in a small amount of money into this piece of it for secretarial support. What we would like to be able to have is that our elementary secretaries, who do not work in the summertime, to give them two more weeks, which is not a whole lot of time, but to enable them to help again with this whole transitioning process, just the records alone, because they're gonna be moved, all of the permanent records on students, and then, you know, new records coming in, et cetera. So that's $75,000. We're asking for that. We also put in monies for IT temporary help. There is a significant amount of technology that needs to be moved. So for example, we have more technology in our 3-5 schools than we do in our K-2 schools. Well, now all eight schools are gonna have 3-5, students in grades three through five. So some of the technology that exists in those 3-5 schools need to be moved to some of the others. And then there's the whole setup of all that technology. We also moved to central registration this year because if parents had children moving into kindergarten at CAFPEN, well, guess what? CAFPEN doesn't have kindergarten right now. They only have grades three through five. So we thought it would be a lot simpler for parents if they came to Parsons to register their children, so they all received the same information. And meanwhile, it also eased the burdens on the building, and then we will do the orientations closer to the beginning of the school year. But at least by centralizing it, we felt that it provided greater, again, information and maybe some sense of confidence on the part of parents coming into the school system. And meanwhile, it made us much more efficient that it was centralized. So there's some money in that line item, which is also for that role. Moving expenses. We're only asking for $50,000. You may recall that a year ago, we put $250,000 in the non-lapsing account. This was money that we had left over in the budget last year, and so we deliberately put that into the non-lapsing account for the purpose of moving. And we actually put $300,000 in, but we used $50,000 of it toward the consultants for the redistricting for the last part of it, which was all of the, that needed to be done for identification of where the individual students would go, et cetera. So we put, so that $50,000 went to the consultants, so we need another $50,000. You may ask, "Well, how do you ascertain that it's $300,000? That's what it cost six years ago?" And I know that Mr. Richatelli was in touch with the movers, and this is the fee that we feel is appropriate. We also have MIS work, network wiring and alterations that have to occur in various buildings, again, with technology being moved, and also, you know, some of the buildings are not up, is that correct to say? They're not as strongly, the networking is not as strong in some buildings as it is in others? Is that correct?
I would say, all of our buildings have wireless connectivity. We do need, though, in the buildings that are currently K-2, to increase the ability, those wireless connections, because there'll be, as 3-5 classes enter those buildings, there'll be a greater number of machines, and so certain areas of those buildings are gonna just need more support, absolutely.
So we put in the budget, the, we're gonna go across here, $20,000 for the MIS work that needs to be done. We also have building projects that we know are going to have to occur, and the building projects, for example, there are some classrooms that are gonna have to be repurposed. So we now are gonna have pre-K classrooms in at least three of our school buildings. Those classrooms need some modifications to them. You know, they've all been housed in Orange Avenue for the last five years, and now there are gonna be some that are gonna be out in some other buildings. That's just one example, you know, of the building projects that might have to take, that will be taking place. There are instructional supplies over and above what we would normally purchase. So again, go back to my example of taking classrooms that existed in four buildings and we're now spreading them across to eight buildings. It means that there's more, some more instructional materials that have to be ordered from the point of view is that you have more sharing when you have, you're able to share more because you have more sections. When the classes were in four schools, now they're gonna be spread across eight. So whereas, you know, maybe in a particular grade level, you had two or three sets of particular materials in a particular discipline, you have to have more sets of those, whether they be science, et cetera, when you move it over eight schools. So that's part of the issue of the instructional supplies and also ensuring that there's equity across all eight schools so that no school has more than another school. We also are asking for the same reason. We have monies in here, $28,000 for library media center collection. So the example I give, if you went into CAFPEN or you went into Orange Avenue and you went into their library, we have rich libraries, which is wonderful, but you don't just kinda draw the line down the middle and say, "Okay, 50% of these books go to this school and 50% go to this book, this school." We wanna make sure that our schools continue to have sufficient copies of books for children so that when we go into the library, they can take out particular, you know, that there's two or three maybe of certain authors or certain texts that they really love, and not say, "Nope, you wanna get one, and you get one, and that's the end of it." You know, so that's part of the reason why we want to have more additional library materials so that we can make sure that those libraries, every one of them, K through five, are going to be as rich as they are at this point. We also put in money, forty-some thousand dollars for musical instruments. You may wonder about that as well. Again, you're taking a strings program and a band program, and you're putting them into eight schools. So we don't wanna say, "Well, these four schools have a cello and a viola." These four schools don't. Sorry. You know, again, this is an issue of equity. So we're purchasing a number of musical instruments to make sure that in each of the schools, there are, there's equity in the instruments and that there really can be, orchestra or strings can be taught in those, in every one of the schools, in the way it should be, and band the same way, and no student is denied access to instruments just simply because they happen to be in one building versus another. Furniture and fixtures, really a small amount, $10,000, and then that's really, you know, there may be some particular kinds of classroom desks or tables, et cetera. I'm thinking of the pre-K classrooms or, you know, some other classrooms where we just have to purchase some furniture. There may be some teacher desks that we need to purchase. We're not really quite sure about that, so we put in a small amount there. And then lastly, professional development, we put in additional $20,000 for this particular priority, the reconfiguration, because we know there are teachers who are going to be changing grade levels, and they're gonna need professional development because it's a new grade level. It's a new curriculum, it's new materials, et cetera. So that's the $20,000. So what you see here, again, these are all one-time costs. So this $427,500 will not be in the budget the following year. The other costs, which really are the staffing, presumably will be unless we had, we saw some real decline. And what I would say to you again is that, you know, this was the priority this year. This is what parents really wanted, and we are pleased to be able to move in this direction. It is, the reconfiguration is going very smoothly up to this point. If I could take just a minute to kind of update you, every parent in the district, with the exception of pre-K, have received notification of what school is their home school. So they all know that. Every parent whose child is eligible for grandfathering has been notified, and we've also heard back from parents as to who wants to take advantage of that. And so we have that information also for the children at Live Oaks who are in the multi-age program, which is our first grade and second graders are together for two years. And those children were permitted to be able to, those that would be going into second grade were permitted to be able to be grandfathered as well. They were notified, and we've heard back from a percentage of those parents, those who want to be grandfathered. So we're very close to being able to start to declare, you know, how many sections will be in each school. We still have to finalize our self-contained classrooms, where they will be, and notify those parents, and also our pre-K classrooms. But it has gone very, very smoothly. We're also working side by side with the Y with respect to, I think you know that there are some children from Pumpkin Delight as well as from Kennedy, who took part in the after-school program that we offer in both of those schools that have been redistricted. We committed to enabling them next year anyways to still be able to participate in that program. So we're working with the Y around that because maybe the Y might be able to take those who do not wanna continue with that but still wanna have an after-school program at the same cost. And we're working with the Y to see, can the Y pick up those students but at a comparable cost to what the families would have been paying if they had stayed at the Kennedy or at the Pumpkin Delight program. And the other thing is, we're working with parents whose children participated and were transported to the Boys and Girls Club and who also were redistricted to see that we would be able to continue to transport them for next year. So we're really taking care of, up to this point, all of the needs that were raised during the whole process of coming to the decision around reconfiguration, and we're moving that much more closely to actually now being able to determine how many classes will be in each school and then move to determining staffing, which is a really good thing. And the last thing that I would say about the reconfiguration, some of you were here six years ago when this all occurred. I was not. But what I can tell you is that this reconfiguration and redistricting is far more complex. We are not the same schools that we were six years ago. We're not even the same schools in terms of the kinds of things that we're offering. We have computer labs in our schools now. We have a much richer science program. We have much richer libraries. We have classroom libraries in all of our schools. And so when you think in terms of the education that children are receiving in our schools today, it's much richer than it was even six years ago. That's not to take anything away from the system. It's to say that, you know, there's been an enormous amount of work that has occurred in the last five years to really strengthen and again, enrich our elementary program. And then besides that, six years ago, schools were paired. So the only school that really was redistricted six years ago was Simon Lake. Simon Lake was closed. All of those students were redistricted. Other children, they moved to, they moved to a paired school. So Kennedy and Pumpkin were paired, which meant that 50% of the kids left Pumpkin and went to Kennedy, basically the K-2 students. And then the 3-5 students from Kennedy went to Pumpkin. That was, that was the move, and that happened with four sets of paired schools. This redistricting was across the system and involved, you know, more children being moved, some of them to greater distances, et cetera. So it's just more complex than it was six years ago. So I'll stop there with respect to reconfiguration and then move through just the other remaining priorities. This, I think we can move through quickly. We had two other areas in the academics that we are requesting support in. Two academic support specialists for the high schools, one for each high school. What this would enable us to do is to open up an academic support center that would be open all day long, that identified students, both special ed and regular ed, could get additional support in English and in mathematics. You may ask, "Why are you zeroing in on those two courses?" Three years ago, we had an audit done in, around our special ed program, but it also involved regular ed, and one of the recommendations that came forth from that audit was that our intervention program at both the middle school and high school in math and in English Language Arts really needed to be strengthened. We've done a lot of work at the middle school level, and now what we would really wanna do is to move to the high school level, and this is one of the ways that we feel could really help a number of our students. The other thing that we are, a position that we are asking for is a .2 guidance counselor at the academy. That equates to one day a week. We have a .8 right now. She works four days a week. We would like to expand it to five days a week. And our reason for that is this person in this role is invaluable. This person is working with a number of students to establish internships for them. Ms. Glennon talked about the internships programs that are across the high schools in Foreign and Law. The academy is also having students engaged in internship programs. The goal there is to have every student participate in an internship. In addition, she does work with adult education, since there are some students who may move into the GED program. She also serves to, almost as a transition counselor, if students leave the academy and go back to Law High School or to Foreign. And she sometimes is also working with students who may be in the expelled program, which also is housed at the academy in the afternoon. So her role has really taken on a broader sense of responsibilities, and we really feel the extra day a week is warranted. Those are the two areas that we're asking for academic improvement for the system. The other, another area that we are looking at is the whole area of safety and school climate. And you will see that there are two categories of requests. The first is that we are asking for greeters for each of the middle schools. So if any of you have been in an elementary school in our district, we have, you ring the buzzer, and immediately when you are let in, it's somebody there who is greeting you, right then and there. You can't get beyond the person, and you have to sign in. You receive a badge, you know, you have to sign out, depending upon where you're going. There's a call that goes forward, you know, Mrs. so-and-so's on her way down, or sometimes the person may be escorted to wherever they're going, et cetera. It has been, it's a position that has been invaluable at the elementary schools. Our parents love it. The people that are in the position are really part of, you know, the fabric of the school, et cetera. What we are asking for is to have greeters at each of the middle schools. We have secretaries there, but if you've been in any of the middle schools, the design of the school is such that when you walk into any one of the three middle schools, you walk in and there's a you walk in and there's a large hallway with no one there, and you can just walk right through. And, and in, and if you had to be stopped, it means the secretary coming out from a desk, having to go around a partition that's waist-high in order to get out of the office to run after somebody. There's nobody to stop them. They can see some, they can buzz them in, but there's no one to really greet that person immediately when they come into the building. We have security guards at the high school, you can't be, get beyond, you know? In the high, either one of the high schools, you're signing in right there. The middle school is the piece that's missing this. So we're asking that each of the middle schools would have a greeter. And again, this is, this is to, a set of eyes that's actually seeing somebody and signing somebody in, letting, you know, whoever is, wherever they're going, to let somebody know the person is coming in, to sign people out. It's just one more step, I think, around public relations, just in terms of people coming into the building and having a sense of, okay, someone is right here stopping me. It's also, you know, somebody greeting them, and there's also just an, an area of safety here that's part of this. The other request that we're making is for a full-time position. It's a new position. It's called a security coordinator. Mr. Richatelli can speak to this in much more detail, but what you may not know is that the whole area of security has expanded exponentially, quite frankly, since Sandy Hook. There are many more mandates that have come down from the state as to what is required in our schools around security. The good news is Milford was way ahead of the game before, before Sandy Hook occurred, and we had a lot of pieces in place. And we have, with the support of the, the budgets that have come forth from you in the last two years, we've been able to put many more pieces in place in the schools to make them safe. But the, but, but the, the requirements and expectations around security have just grown immensely. So the state mandates now that every school has to have a, a safety committee. The committee, on that committee has to be police officer, has to be a fireman. The committee has to meet so many meetings a year, the minutes have to be forwarded up to Mr. Richatelli. There are so many lockdown drills, so many fire drills, which we always had, we always had so many minimum that we had to do every year. But now there has to be a police officer, for example, or a fireman has to be there when those take place, which is good in the sense of we get feedback, but it's just that many more demands. You're talking about 14 buildings here. There is reporting that has to be done to the state that we've never had to do before, and more. And the desire is to have someone who could be the point person for security in the district. That person could go out to the school and be the person who would be there for that lockdown drill, and give feedback then to the faculty, because they oftentimes will meet with the principal, they may also meet with the faculty to give feedback on it. That person could help buildings around particular safety issues. That person could be a liaison between the school system and both the safety committee as well as the police department and the fire department. So, you know, it's a person who would assume that responsibility, and the role is, the role is really needed, both the chief of police, as well as Bill Richardson, who's who, the, you know, the working group, which was formed two weeks after Sandy Hook happened, which was comprised of firemen, policemen, principals, trying to think of who, yourself, obviously, and this, as the secretaries, there are, there are, this committee has met since January of 2013 continuously. And that committee also is recommending this position. So those are, that's the two, the two major requests under safety and school climate. And the last piece is, we have a few operational requests. One is a custodian for East Shore Middle School. East Shore, as you know, has a beautiful addition to it, thanks again to the support of the city. It has an additional 21,000 square feet, and as a result of that much more just floor space, let alone classrooms, et cetera, there is a need for an additional custodian. And lastly, we are requesting both a special education van driver and a special education van. And let me explain the rationale for that. We have, you know that Durham is our bus company, with whom we are, we have a contract, and they transport all of our students, but they transport all of our regular education students. They do not transport our special education students. We have to go out every year annually to bid for our special education students who need to be transported, either in district or out of district. And when, when we're talking about who needs special kinds of, of transportation, in special kind of vehicles. What we have found is, is that there are a number of students within district that need to be transported in special vans, or maybe to Stratford, which isn't far away, that if we could do it ourselves, it actually would be more economical than to continually pay to go out for somebody else to do this in a private way. We own three vans right now. What we're asking is, we'd like to purchase a fourth. We'd train our, get, get our own driver trained, it would be one of our own people, and that van then would be used to transport students. And, and I gave the example of Stratford, that's an example, where the kids who go to a special program in Stratford, if we transported those kids, how much more savings there would be, rather than, again, having some, a private, a private vendor who then transports these students. We know that it's going to be $60,000, but the $60,000 in a matter of a few years would be gained back and more in the long term if we could do this. So those are our requests, and these are our major requests in the budget. What I'd like to say to you is, a significant amount of these requests are offset in savings. And the second page outlines the savings. So if you'll bear with me, I'll just take you through that quickly, and then we'll open it up for question. You saw that we were asking for a million, almost a million-two in staffing. We actually are going to be able to offset those requests with staff reductions due to declining enrollment. 13.4 regular education teachers, obviously that's not at the elementary level, we're talking middle and high school, and then five special education teachers. So, again, a significant amount of the staffing requests for the reconfiguration, and also for, for example, the two pieces at the, the two positions at the high school are, are offset because of declining enrollment. We are also going to find some savings of $170,500, or $170,00, yeah, $500 through transportation. We are going to be able to reduce our buses by $150,000. Part of that is through the reconfiguration. We think they're going to be, in the long term, fewer buses. And the other is, there is going to be a drop in fuel, approximately $20,000, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that there's a new arrangement now between Durham and the city that is really going to yield a cost savings to us. And then in the area of other savings, curriculum work. So in last year's budget, we had an, an increase in the amount of money that we requested for curriculum work. We had a significant amount of curriculum work that was pursued this past summer. I mean, we had hundreds of teachers who were working on curriculum. And so this summer, we, we don't anticipate as much of the need. Curriculum work is always being done in the summer in any district, but we reduced that by nearly $120,000. In energy conservation, if you remember, we've been, had a contract with Synergistics, formerly Energy Education, for the last five years, this is four years, excuse me, around energy conservation, and we've saved significantly as a result of that. But we've had to pay Synergistics every year $253,000 as part of the contract. Well, the contract ends in June, so there's going to be a savings of $253,000. We are only going to, however, use 100, about, about half of that to offset costs, because we'd like to take half of that money and really apply it to energy infrastructure in the district, again, to, to reduce our energy costs. We've made some, we've really gained lots of, of savings, but we want to continue that. So that's why you only see 126 versus the $253,000 in savings there. And then lastly, computers. Again, last year, we had a much larger request for computers. However, as a result of money from the Board of Education budget, as well as a grant that we received from the state, we were able to purchase a significant amount of technology for this school year. One example being, we purchased 600 Chromebooks. I don't know if you know what a Chromebook is, but it's about, it's a computer that's about this big, very, very portable, very light, and that can be used very easily by students across the system. So when we looked at the technology budget this year, we were able to reduce it by $422,000. So what you see is, you know, other, the other savings is 668,000. So our total offsetting savings from the current budget is $1,009,000, almost $2,000,000 are the savings that we have found to offset the requests that we made. And in that first box down below, what you see is ultimately, the requests that we made were $2,229,000, and our savings is $1,942,566 to offset that. And then when you look at, well, what does that, what is the bottom line down in the bottom square there, you can see that our adopted budget, the current budget, is $89,213,000. Our requested budget coming off of the Board of Finance meeting is $91,000,000, and the difference is $1,008, approximately a 2% increase, which I will say to you that, given the cost of reconfiguration, the fact that we were coming in at 2% is really, we believe, very, very responsible. I mean, we really knew this was going to be a lot of money that we were requesting, so we looked lots and lots and lots of places to really offset the costs. So with that, I'm going to stop, and we will answer any questions that anyone may have.
Alderman Fontana.
Through you to Dr. Fieser. Hi. I have questions about the four teacher leader positions at $280,000. Well, the first thing I have is, I wanted to know which schools have it now, the teacher leaders, and what are the educational qualifications or requirements for a teacher leader? And is this, you talk about it being a managerial position? Is it managerial?
So it's a good question. I, I, actually, I'm really glad you asked that question, because I should have clarified. These are teaching positions, so what's required is the person has to be a teacher.
Certified.
They have to be, that, we want them to hold an administrative certification, but they are not administrators. They are teachers. They are paid on, they are part of the teacher union contract, they are paid a teacher salary, and what they basically are is they're released from classroom teaching responsibilities. If, if that answers your question.
Okay, so although you require the administrator certificate, you consider them managers?
We don't call them managers. We, they're called teacher leaders, and basically, but they do a lot of the managerial kinds of things in schools, as I said. They, they do, you know, a lot of the little discipline things, you know, they, a parent comes in and has a question about a particular situation, they might meet with the parent. If it was a major meeting, obviously, the principal would be meeting with the parent. You know, they are, they're checking on the lunchrooms continually, you know, part of that is, is just kind of letting kids know that, you know, someone's, I mean, we have, we have lunch, lunch aids in every one of the, the schools. I have anything?
No, it's okay.
Okay. I think it's working now. So, again, the responsibility, so they would be in the cafeteria for each of the lunch periods, just, you know, making sure kids are fine, you know, if there were some, some kinds of disputes, et cetera. You know, they would help with the scheduling, you know, at the beginning of the year, if there's particular, if there's assemblies, the teacher leaders really take, take the lead in a lot of that, working with the groups of teachers, whatever the purpose of the assembly is. They may be working with a, a, a grade-level team, you know, around instructional issues. They, they may also be doing some professional development. So I don't want to say that it's just managerial, there's many, many more roles. And Mr. Cummings, did you want to add to that?
Speak a little bit. In addition to what Dr. Fieser's enumerated, the, a couple of things I'd point out, in each of the buildings where teacher leaders exist, they'll sit in on PPTs, this is the reason we asked for the O9-2, which is the administrator certification, in the absence of the principal, they'll sit in on PPTs. They lead and work with the student assistance teams, which is our SRBI or our Student Intervention Processes. At, I'll give you a couple more concrete examples, at Pumpkin Delight, as well as at other buildings, but specifically at Pumpkin Delight, the board just saw a presentation on Monday evening from the teacher leader on the work that she does to lead a student government type of association with student representatives from all the grade levels, and now those students themselves create a lot of the structures that support the culture and climate growth within that building. That, again, happens at all, of the other sites as well. Another example, from Kennedy School, where the teacher leader is trained in cognitive coaching, she works specifically, she's a former math coach, so she works with our math and literacy coaches to support their work and teachers. As, as Dr. Fieser said, teacher leaders will work to support classroom instruction, particularly the new teachers. Dr. Fieser spoke to the, the significant work we've done curriculum-wise at the elementary levels. The past five years, we've totally revised our math and reading curriculum, we've implemented the Math Investigations Program, the Reader's Workshop Model, and so the teacher leaders will work with new teachers. We hired nearly 15, we hired 15 elementary teachers this year. So the, where the teacher leaders exist with the new teachers, it's an extra set of supports for the teachers as they acclimate themselves to the expectations of the Milford Curricular and Instructional Program. So there's a lot they do in addition to the management piece, they work directly with students and directly with other, with their peers.
And one more question. You mentioned the new programs. Is there any measured, measured success of those new programs that were added because of the teacher leaders?
As a result of the teacher leaders? No, the, the teacher leaders are really only in, what, their second year? Second year. So we don't have a program related directly to that. I would say that the, the way we measure that is the responses of the teachers, the new teachers, and, and when they speak to the supports they've received. The measures that the district currently has in place, because we're in between a, happily enjoying the void of the CMT before the SBA comes, the current measures are the district measures, or DRA, which is our reading measure, as well as the unit measures in in math. And as Dr. Fieser said, we've seen growth in, on measures pretty much at every grade level and every classroom. But the, here's what I'd say to you, even if, even if I could point to you and say, well, the DRA scores are up in this, and, you know, the fact of the matter is that so much of the work the district has done over the past five years has been to increase the numbers of supports for all staff in five years has been to increase the numbers of supports for all staff in so many ways that to single out a single influence on those scores would be impossible. It's really the work that we're doing to collaboratively support teachers, structuring our Wednesday afternoon meetings so that teachers are meeting together and learning from each other. There's so much going on to support teacher growth, to directly influence student achievement, that to pick out a single factor would really be impossible, and not fair to any of the other factors that are influencing that growth.
And which schools have the teacher leaders now?
Teacher leaders currently are at Pumpkin Delight, Meadowside, Kennedy, and Matheson.
And one more. Will the teacher leaders be doing teacher evaluations, or the principal does that?
Teacher evaluations are only conducted by the administrator. Teachers are part of the teacher bargaining unit because of both that contract, because of, one, the contract, that would not be allowed, but secondly, that's not the role we want them to play.
Thank you.
And just, if you wouldn't mind, may I add just a little more to what you just asked? Part of the, and we really support this, part of the new evaluation plan, you know, mandated, you know, but we would be doing this anyways, is that, you know, every teacher has to establish formal goals in writing at the beginning of the year. They don't just put them in writing and send them in. There's a meeting with every single teacher. So you're talking about at the elementary level, again, a principal, meeting with everyone, one-on-one conference with every one of his or her teachers around the goals. At the mid-year, mandated, required, they have to have a mid-year meeting. Teacher brings in all his or her data. The principal is meeting with all of them. The teacher leader allows for, is picking up, there's no disruptions on the part of the principal unless something huge happened. That was not the case in the past. Anytime a parent came in, boom, the meeting ended because the principal would have to meet with the parent. If there was a situation down in somebody's classroom, meeting end, you'd have to run down to the, because the elementary level, they have themselves, their secretary, and the nurse. I mean, that's really, I mean, in the sense of people they can run to immediately for something. The teacher leader has helped immensely in allowing the principal to really carry out her role or his role in really being the instructional leader in the school. And it's just, it's, that, I will say, I think, has really contributed to strengthening the instruction in the classroom and contributed, then therefore, to the student performance increasing at the elementary level.
Alderman, Stanford.
Yes, could you please tell me how teacher leaders are selected?
Teacher leaders, they would, the position is posted. They go through an interview process that would consist of interviews with the building principals, so it's seen by the whole group, and then ultimately, they could be, they would wind up being interviewed by either Dr. Fieser or myself.
Is there a special academic background that they need?
No, we, they, from a certification point of view, in addition to the O-92, teacher leaders at the elementary level need to be, for certification purposes, because they'll be working with elementary students, need to be, have a K6 certification. You're welcome.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to members up here. Thank you very much for the extensive insight as to what's happening and how it's happening. Kudos to what's happening at the elementary level, finally recognizing the fact that there only is, at one point in time, was only a principal and a secretary and everything, and we did it all. We're dealing with a lot of perception here, a lot of abstractness, too. Here's, and we're going to talk about the teacher leader at this point. That individual has to be a certified teacher. That individual, if the requirement is to have an O-92, it sounds to me like this is an assistant principal. I think if Greta was still principal, President of the Union, that that probably would not be a teacher's position at that particular time, point in time, but it would have been an administrative position. And I, frankly, I can't understand how you're getting away with it, number one. Number two is that, you know, we fought very hard to be out of the lunchroom because it was a waste of our times as administrators, the discipline problems and everything else. But if you haven't got your finger on the pulse, and you don't know what's happening, you lose connection with your school. That's my opinion. I'm just wondering, is it a set position that MEA has agreed that they're, these people are teachers, and MASA has not gotten you to the point where they are almost in line of what an assistant principal would be doing in the elementary school? That would be my first question.
So the first thing that I would say is that when we created the position, we, of course, in the back of the mind, we know that there are schools that have assistant principals. We also know the perception that exists around administrators, and how many administrators are in a district. We also were aware of the fact that if we had assistant principals, that's $40,000 more per teacher leader. And we also knew that there are a number of districts in the state that have the equivalent of a teacher leader in their elementary schools. We knew that the state approved the position for a classroom teacher, and quite honestly, the union never raised, I don't remember, they never raised a question about it. They really didn't, you know? And when the board supported it, the board saw it as an opportunity to help grow teachers, you know, that there may be teachers who are aspiring administrators, that this was a wonderful, kind of quote, "training ground" for them while they're making a huge contribution. So, you know, so MASA did not raise any issue, nor did the union. I mean, there were, you know, we had to give lots of clarification, et cetera, but they are, but they are accepted in, by both groups.
Okay, thank you. Just a follow-up. On page 12 of the booklet, I was reading something, and maybe, hopefully, you can help me understand the relationship in our school system, or now what we're dealing with, NCLB as it, versus Common Core. We had, is there a smattering of both still in existence? And, I mean, it was nothing other than NCLB still has some play in the school system, Mike? Maybe you know that, or Betty? I don't know that. But Common Core, let me just finish my, you know, I'd like to know what I thought we did away with, or no longer was dealing with NCLB, and Common Core took over, but you can explain that? The other thing is that Common Core has really driven our budget because of unfunded mandates, as I see it, because of the increased evaluations, the amount of evaluations per year per new teacher as opposed to tenured teachers. Can you tell me also, aside from that first section, first question, was our evaluation vehicle in Milford, Milford's evaluation vehicle, is it equal to or greater than what the state requires? If you can answer those two questions, please?
Okay. I will make an attempt. The first question, No Child Left Behind is still the law of the land. The Congress right now, in the Senate, they're in process of engaging in what no doubt will be a lengthy debate about the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. That's been actually, it should have been reauthorized, I think, about four years ago, and they're only now are getting around to it. So that prior authorization of the act was known as No Child Left Behind. No Child Left Behind mandates, that reauthorization of ESEA mandates annual testing in grades three through eight in at least one high school testing period. It mandates the AYP approach that we, the state has now, currently has a waiver on that Connecticut doesn't necessarily, right now, apply to us. The vestige, most prominent vestige so far of NCLB is the remaining CMT in science in grades five, eight, and 10 in the CAPT, and that's because one of the mandated testing areas under NCLB was science. SBA or Smarter Balance is taking over the English and reading portions of that. But again, that, the reason we test in grades three through eight and have now the SBA in grade 11 is part of the NCLB. Separate and apart from NCLB is the teacher evaluation. That was a separate, that's a state requirement that was put in several years ago, and it came at the same time, in a sense, as Common Core, which is, I think, part of the reason people meld the two together, but they are separate. One is a state law and one is a federal law. NCLB has always required an evaluation system for teachers, and part of the waiver process for NCLB that the state applied for required the goal-setting from teachers and administrators. Having said that, our teacher evaluation plan, to your second question, our teacher evaluation plan would not be allowed by the state if it didn't meet the minimal requirements of the state plan, which it does. Both our teacher and our administrator evaluation plans meet the minimal requirements of the state plan. Our teacher plan, our administrator plan, quite frankly, go beyond that. You could do a very compliance model with your teacher and administrator evaluation plans, and you can go out and say you did everything you were supposed to do and rely on a checklist, and I think, quite honestly, you'd be compliant, but you wouldn't have a teacher evaluation or administrator evaluation plan that changes the dynamic and starts driving student achievement. We've opted instead, because we started early, for a teacher evaluation plan and administrator evaluation plan that asks more, asks for more, and require more of a dialogue, require more reflection, require deeper thinking, and really require a change process. It requires on our end, from a budget perspective, the professional learning for our administrators and our teachers, but fundamentally, its most basic value, that teacher evaluation plan is changing the conversation in district, focusing back on student achievement results, and, you know, to my opinion, quite honestly, is driving so much of the changes that we're seeing across the district in terms of teacher ownership and student growth.
And I appreciate it, but again, can you put a cost piece to the unfunded mandate that the, with the increased amount of evaluations that we need to do so that we need to hire more people to help out the administrator in the building? Is there a cost that you can attribute to that, what it's cost us in personnel or whatever? Can you quantify that at all?
Well, we, the only people that we've hired to assist in the evaluations, and it's really to free up the elementary principals, is the teacher leader positions. Those positions, as we've said, though, and certainly if you look at the job descriptions, their role is far more extensive than just being available in the office if the principal's there. In fact, one of the things that Dr. Fieser and I have said to the principals is, teacher leaders really shouldn't be in the office. They should be out in schools, in the classrooms, and working with kids and teachers. The, we do, again, we have the professional development, but I would say that no matter what teacher evaluation plan would be in place, we would have a professional development. Under the old plan, under the old teacher evaluation plan, there was a state requirement that you had to support your principals with 15 years, excuse me, 15 hours of training and evaluation every five years. That hasn't changed under the new plan, so that's part of the unfunded mandate. I don't know what else.
Guess what I'm getting at is the fact that there have been new hireres just to evaluate, to help the evaluation process, as other systems have done. They've gone to retired people to help with the evaluations in schools, so there's a cost factor.
We haven't done that. We've only, we've relied totally in-house on our evaluations.
Okay, but we have not hired additional staff at all within the realm of, in the guise of being other, taking advantage of that hire to do other things?
To complete observations and evaluations? No, are all of our administrators, you know, folks at central office? We assign folks to central office, you know, myself included, to go out and do observations in order to kind of even the loads out among certain buildings that are heavier than others? But we've not hired a person or persons specifically to come in, do observations, and I know other districts have done that, but Milford has not done that.
Okay, thank you. And I guess what I'm getting at is that I think our program, our vehicle, is a much more vigorous program or vehicle than the state minimum. My question would be, and I think what happened is that it was delved into immediately, and that we had several, if I, I could be mistaken, we had several models that we could have tapped into, but creating our own model with more vigor to it and more, as you say, getting down and doing the work that should be done to improve student performance. But I, in my opinion, and I guess in how I see it in the perception, is that we went into it too quickly. It cost us a lot more money than we thought it would cost us, and I would have just liked to have seen it more, in a more gradual approach, and still taking on the same effort and the same goals that we are doing, that we had today. So that, that's just where I'm coming from. As far as the other questions that, I'll let somebody else.
I just want to say, though, to your concern about us, our starting point, I think, quite honestly, the great advantage to our plan over a lot of district plans is, before it was actually required that we have one, we gathered, you know, 45 teachers and administrators, primarily teachers. I mean, there was only four or five administrators in the room for four days in the summer of 2011, and we developed the instructional framework, which became our rubric by which we measure instructional practices. It's the basis of our evaluation plan. But we did that a year before we had to do it, and what it allowed us to do is, first, it allowed us not to rush, and it, fundamental success of our work is that teachers develop the rubric. And I think if we had waited, we would have wound up, again, with a compliance document that, something that we'd be done to teachers, and we've started from a point that teachers were partners in the process. So I don't disagree in the sense that that would, we started a year early, and therefore it would cost us a little bit more money, but in the long run, the benefits, I think, the fact that we worked with teachers from the very beginning, I think we set a tone right then that this was something that we're all in and we're all responsible for.
Thank you. And just one other follow-up. The idea of the four additional teacher leaders, if and for some reason you had decided you didn't need them anymore, and you worked with the four existing ones, would you be able to split them between the schools in half the week in one school, half the week at another school? The same kind of work that they're doing that you would have with FTE, full-time FTE at each?
Yeah. I have to say, Alderman Vitale, it's one of the things that we initially started to talk about, but as we played that out, the most difficult thing becomes, I'll give you an example. I was on the phone this morning with one of our principals, one of our supervisors who was supporting that principal around an issue that, in one of our schools, and this was an issue that had already taken the principal, who does not have a teacher leader, a day of their time earlier this week, and now I had a supervisor going in because there was allegations of bullying around this. And I think just in those types of examples, to try to schedule a, as you well know, you can't schedule somebody to the crisis, you know, and just say, well, we've got to hold off on that and wait till the teacher leader's here. And I think that there's just so much going on right now in our buildings, and so much has changed in society, quite honestly, with needs of kids over the past 10 years, that unfortunately, in some ways, those supports always have to be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, and thank you for your presentation. Question, I don't know who can explain. Enrollment today and where it should be 10 years from now, projections, student-wise, and where it's going?
The enrollment, if you have your budget book, or if you have your executive summary, it's on Roman numeral page 14, which shows you the October 1st enrollment, October 2014, which is the official date that the state has us submit our enrollment. And you can see on that page that the current enrollment is for 2014-15. This was on October 1st with 6,244 students. To be honest with you, we don't, I don't have with us the projections for five to 10 To be honest with you, we don't, I don't have with us the projections for five to 10 years out. We certainly can get that information to you, we just don't have it with us right here. But it continues to decline.
An estimate over 10 years of?
They estimate, but they don't, firms won't really go out 10 years because they're not reliable 10 years out. But for example, you know, six or seven years, it's a steady decline. Less so at the elementary school because the elementary has already declined significantly, but you start to really see it at the middle school and the high school. We're already seeing it in the middle school.
So over five years, do we know?
Yes, we have five years, absolutely. We can send that information to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, different question. The after-school program, I don't know if I missed some of it, but how many schools offer that now, and what's the plans on that?
So the, and we have, for those of you that remember Simon Lake, there was an after-school program at Simon Lake that was the, it was a district after-school program. When Simon Lake closed, there was a real strong, I don't know if it was formal petition on the part of parents, to say that they wanted to keep that same program when their kids were redistricted to Kennedy and to Pumpkin. The Y at the time was in Kennedy and Pumpkin, offering the after-school program. So what the district did was is they moved the Y out of Kennedy and Pumpkin and moved the program from Simon Lake into Pumpkin and JFK. And so that program has continued for the last five years. It's our program, it's our staff, it's our funding. And Durham has donated two buses, one for Kennedy and one for Pumpkin, that takes the kids home after that. Well, not really home, but, you know, those kids that need to, that aren't walkers. So that's what that is. And if you're asking about the redistricting piece, there are kids now who have been redistricted, who are part of that program, out of Kennedy and out of Pumpkin. And a request was made, was there a way in which we could somehow still accommodate those students? And would you want to explain the details of that?
Sure. Sure. The details of those current students who are, the current students who are being bused from JFK and Pumpkin Delight to Boys and Girls Club, who will now be redistricted to Mathuason and Meadowside, those students will still receive transportation, those students and their siblings will still receive transportation to Boys and Girls Club for this coming year. Then with regard to the Milford Public Schools Before and After Care Program that's at JFK and Kennedy, those current families who have students in those programs, in that program now at either of those two schools, who are being redistricted to Mathuason or Meadowside, will have the option this year of either going to JFK and Pumpkin for those programs but providing their own transportation, or more likely, what the scenario that they will pick is the YMCA will be, YMCA will be in Mathuason and Meadowside, and those students will be able to enroll in the Y program but at the Milford Public Schools price. So they won't incur a higher price than the Y charges rather than the one that we do.
Thank you, Chairman. I really don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I agree that this is a remarkable and very responsible budget, and I think we're all aware of the challenges that you have faced in the last several years. You've integrated SROs, you've gone through a year with the reconfiguration and redistricting and all the other challenges and debates. And here we have a budget, and at the same time, you've expanded opportunities and performance for our students. And I think this is something that we should all be grateful, and certainly I want to acknowledge, and I thank you all.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you, thank you for the presentation, and I, you might have touched upon this, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but could you just expand upon the role of the academic support specialist? Is that a, is that a new position to the system, and what schools would have that, and what kind of training they would require?
Yes, as Dr. Fieser spoke about, we know we have to do more to support students who are struggling at the high school level. In order to do that, we want to, excuse me, collaboration with the building principals and the staff at both high schools, we want to implement a support center. And to support that support center getting going, one of the things we've done in the budget is allocate one FTE or one full-time employee to each of the two. Having said that, that's not going to do it by itself, and so one of the things we've said to the buildings is, in their allotted staffing, they've got to come up with the additional staffing to make this work. We don't, we really ideally want to have a support center that's open eight periods a day, the eight periods of the day for the students, and staffed with both a language arts person and a math person. So in the budget, we'll give them some support, but again, the buildings are going to be, we're relying on the buildings to come up with the additional support that's need to make this work.
Just another follow-up. I, through you, I think you touched upon it in the savings portion, the regular buses, the regular transportation, and you anticipate that that's going to be a savings. Has that been finalized, or is that in the works? Is that going to happen with Durham, or, if you could just clarify that, please?
It will. This is the one, this is, transportation is the one area where the economy of scales that Dr. Fieser talks about actually happens in the reverse. And so there's more students, right now, we'll just take, for example, students who go to Mathuason, who are in grades K through 2, they may live all the way down on the shoreline in the Meadowside District. So there's a tremendous amount of transporting between sister schools. When that goes away, students are closer, for the most part, closer to their home school or their redistricted school. There's an increased number of walkers, and there's, and also a decrease in the distance that the bus has to go, and so it improves efficiency. And so we've, our estimate right now is that we'll be able to reduce the equivalent of three buses, which is nine runs. All of our buses, or the vast majority of our buses, do three runs each day. So they'll start with a high school run, then they'll go on to a middle school run, and then they'll do either a 3.5 or a K.2. So they do three runs. And it's our estimate that we'll be able to eliminate nine runs or the equivalent of the cost of three buses. And when, six years ago, when the reconfiguration took place, we had, the district actually had to increase by 10 buses. So we believe that we will be able to do it. We've discussed it with Durham, we've looked at the boundaries and where the students will be coming from and going to, and we're quite confident that we'll be able to save that, at least those three buses.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, Central Administrators. Dr. Fieser, you began your remarks about some of the budget requests and started with the 16 additional elementary classroom teachers, and you very thoroughly, I think, explained about the loss of economy of scale and distributing it over eight schools instead of four. So basically, we're adding 16 elementary classroom teachers, and I know you've really done a very detailed job in showing the offset. The offset on this, or the savings reductions are almost one-to-one, but 13 regular education teachers due to declining enrollment. How is that, how are those staff reductions, how are they actually implemented? Does this involve, is this through attrition? Is it through layoffs? Is it through, you mentioned professional development. I assume that some of the teachers will be moving to different grade levels, maybe within the same school or certainly within the district. How exactly is that implemented?
With respect to the reductions, we are, we constantly are monitoring class sizes, you know, at every grade level. And, you know, one of you asked the question about, you know, enrollment. The enrollment actually continues to decline, and it's really, the middle school is now being impacted, and we're also seeing it a little bit in the high school. And every year, every year since I've been here, and I would say for the last five or six years, there's been a reduction of staff, simply because the numbers have declined. And we saw it the most in the last five years at the elementary. Now, it's really the middle school and the high school. So are we able to declare today exactly where those positions are coming from? Not quite yet, but we're very close to it, because we could look, we could see, well, how many, how many ninth graders are there going to be next year? How many sixth graders will there be next year? And how many of those sixth graders will be in each of the elementary school, I mean, each of the middle schools? And do we need all of the teachers that are currently in place? So that's really how we start to determine the number of positions. And we know for sure that we are able to reduce this number, both in as far as the regular education and to also reduce five special education teachers without impacting services. I think that's the thing that's most critical. This is driven by fewer students. And then you asked about, well, what happens in terms of, are some of them, are some of the positions covered by attrition? We've been very fortunate in the last three years, we've had, we've had no, no one laid off. Every position that's been eliminated, either someone has retired or someone has moved to another district, or they've moved, or aren't with us anymore, and therefore, we've been able to place those teachers that may have been. We're hopeful that that will be the case for many of these positions as well. Might there be an exception? There may be. But it hasn't been since the first year of, was it 2010, when Simon Lake closed and there was the change in reconfiguration, that you really had a layoff list of teachers. But I believe it took one year after that all occurred and all of those teachers were placed. Was it two years? Okay. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much. And thank you. I know this has been a very intense time for the school district in the past two years with the reconfiguration, the redistricting, and so forth. It's been, you've done a masterful job in leading that, and I appreciate it, and with the board, too. Thank you very much.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Smooth jazz concerts have been going on, I believe, 10, 15 years now. Can you tell us how much money has been generated over the years with that program? And how does it relate to a savings in what you propose in the budget?
We would have to get that dollar amount for you. The monies that are generated from Smooth Jazz, and since I have the microphone, I would like to thank, as always, Mr. Rowe for doing that, because it's a tremendous program that he gives back to, you know, to the school system, which?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years. The money that's generated by that is used either, we've done it a couple of things. Each year, for a number of years, quite a number of years, the money was essentially divided among the existing elementary, middle school, and high school teachers, with some prorate because of the level or number of students they worked with. And it was given to them, and teachers would use it to buy supplemental items for the curriculum and instruction. Two years ago, rather than do that, I pooled the money, and we invested in a program that's called Smart Music, which essentially is a computer application program that the teacher, we pay for, for the teachers, that allows them to use SmartPort technology to, for the students to participate in music through the SmartPort technology. So essentially, what happens is the teachers are able to use the program, they can send homework assignments to students, they create lessons within the Smart Music, and for band and strings program, students, for example, they can play those things at home if parents get a subscription to the program, or they play them together in school. The Smart Music program allows teachers the flexibility. First of all, it expands our music catalog exponentially, but it also allows teachers to either slow the music up or speed the music up, depending on students' levels. It differentiates the music by instrument, does different things like that. And you can use it also, I should say, for vocal performance as well.
So in essence, that pays for new initiatives rather than putting a cost savings in the budget?
In this case, what I saw happening, it kind of came when I took over the music and arts program. What I saw happening was that pooling the money might take us a little bit further than necessarily giving everybody a check for a certain amount of dollars. Now, this year, because that was the initial outlay for that, and Smart Music is now part of our budget, we're going to look at perhaps some additional ideas. One of the things I did when I met with the music and art teachers, or the, excuse me, the music teachers today, was to think about, start to generate some other ideas we might use with that money this year. We have yet to receive a check this year. That usually doesn't come till later in the school year, or almost right before, I think, the end of the school year. Two weeks, we're going to get that check. So, but that would be one of the things that we do with the, with the teachers, we'll make some decisions collectively about how to spend that money.
Thank you, and?
And we'll get, we'll get you that amount.
Okay, yeah, please. Just to switch gears, we talked about special ed and the vans, the purchasing of the vans and so forth. Did you at all get a quote from Durham as to what you would like to do with the same program, as to where you're going, where you're transporting kids and so forth? And if you did, is it still more cost-effective to do it on our own with maintenance of the vans, buying of the vans, hirees, employee benefits, the salary, and all of those things? So I think throughout the years, I don't know, but I would have thought it would have been more cost-effective, but not having ownership to that and paying all the taxes and whatever we have to do with a new employee or vans and that kind of thing.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale, we have explored this with Durham. However, they are not, the students that would be transported in these vans are students that have specific physical needs. Durham does not get into that. It's not, it's not the line of work that they want to get into. We asked them if they would, and they refused, right? But what we do is, as Dr. Fieser said, every year, all of our students who are outplaced, that have to go out of district, we have to do a one-for-one RFP that goes out, and then we get bids that come back in, and the low bidder that can meet the services as these students need win the bids. And in some cases, you know, one student, the cost of transporting one student, and Mrs. Keller can elaborate further, but it can be in the tens of thousands of dollars for just one student to be transported out of town. We figure that if we can buy a van at $60,000 that will last us 10 to 15 years and have a driver that is $20,000, that van driver may be able to transport two or three of these students either within Milford or in bordering towns. We believe that we can save money over time rather than going to these individual livery services.
So you're saying that you can buy a van that is modified to accommodate these kids for $40,000?
Correct, yes. And the reason why we can do it at that cost is because there's cooperative purchasing with other districts and with other RESCs, regional education service centers that provide the same types of transportation. We partner with them, and we're able to get the vans with that special equipment at a reduced rate.
Thank you.
Alderman Stanford.
Could you tell me what is the father's place that we send our special ed students to?
Currently, the student who is transported the furthest would be in the Hartford area. Most of our students are within a 30-minute radius. Most of our students are within a thirty-minute radius.
Thank you.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, maybe Mr. Richatelli. So the energy conservation synergistics, that contract's coming up this year, and that's $253,000?
Correct.
I guess one question is, what is the savings, like on an annual basis, that they've, I guess, brought on? And then what's the position, what's going to happen with the position of, I guess, the energy person? Will you keep him on, or will that go away along with the contract, or?
Sure. The, we report, administration reports to the board on an annual basis of what the savings are and what the, what the results are of that synergistics program. And we could send the board a copy of last year's report, but since the inception, the actual savings has been over $1.1 million, over what we would have spent for energy otherwise. And so it's been a very successful program. The program itself is a behavioral program. It changes the culture and the behavior, more so than anything else. There are some infrastructure changes that have been made, but that's not, that's not the meat of this program. The meat is to change the culture of each and every single person that is in our buildings on a daily basis, turning things off and making sure that they stay off. When there's school breaks, making sure that everything is unplugged. Those types of things. Monitoring the schools with the centralized controls that we have, and making sure that when blowers don't need to be on, when students are out of the building and we don't need ventilation, that those huge ventilation fans in the roofs are turned off. All those kinds of things are behavioral, and they're ingrained in the culture now of Milford Public Schools. And one of the, one of the things that we can continue to do, we can continue to receive the services of synergistics, their expertise, their software, all those kinds of things. But one of the requirements that was built into the agreement is that you needed to keep the energy specialist employed in order to take advantage of the synergistics services that they provide. And we don't need to, the board doesn't need to, but then we wouldn't be able to keep the synergistics services. However, the real reason that I, and I'll just speak for myself and not the board, is that we need to constantly reinforce the good practices that we now have in place. Just over short periods of time, people slip back. And there has to be somebody that, who's constantly dedicated, day in and day out, going school to school, room to room, constantly reminding people that this has to take place. And we don't want to slip back, we want to keep moving forward, and we want to keep, we want to, we want to keep saving energy. And we believe that the energy specialist is integral in having that take place, and so at this point, it's built into the budget.
I could give an example. So, we just came off of our April vacation, and one of the things that synergistics does, and this is what would be able to continue free, is that we get a report on, so how energy efficient were we during vacation? And with the report that came back through Mr. Whitaker, 100% of our schools, that's fourteen buildings, fourteen buildings had 100% efficiency during that week, which meant that every single machine that needed to be unplugged was unplugged. Every single machine that needed to be turned off was turned off. Every light in every single building that needed to be turned off was turned off. And, you know, there's all these other things. And actually, I think it's the very first time that we had all fourteen buildings hit the 100% mark. That's, that's just because, it's just the message. I mean, I know, sometimes the people are like, you know, you get tired of someone who's kind of like nagging you, et cetera, but it works. It's principals then getting on their staffs, you know, because these reports come out, you know? I get them, Mr. Richatelli gets them, in terms of, you know, okay, who hit 100%? Who, who fell down? And then, you know, I'm on the phone with the principal and saying, what's the story here? It's, it's behavioral. It's like anything, if you don't have someone who's monitoring regularly, people slide back into their old habits. We all do what you do in your homes, your children do it, you know, you're constantly hounding them, turn the lights off. If you're not there, and you come back to your house, how often do you find the fact that the lights are all on again? I mean, we're creatures of habit. So that's, that's the major understanding on my part of this. And again, we're through with the contract with synergistics, but we get to use their software, we continue to use their software, we can monitor literally, you know, what happens in the course of the year, taking out, if we had, if we had the hurricanes, for example, or the blizzard, I should say, two years ago, when that occurred, the reports, we were able to take that factor out, and then still look at, all right, how are we doing from an energy perspective? That's what, that's how sophisticated the software was. So it's going to help us continue to monitor as well. So we think that for the salary of that position, it's well worth it.
Just to follow up on that, is it possible to, I mean, can you go part-time on that and then share that with the city side? Because we had talked about that in some other prior meetings. Does it have to be a full-time position on the school side? And then one other follow-up, and I'm glad they're monitoring the schools, but I've been by East Shore Middle School many, many times later at night, and it was lit up like a Christmas tree, and just, I don't know if they're, it can't be possibly working that late, it's like 10, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night.
No, and there's a reason for that. First and foremost, safety and security, we don't compromise on that with energy. And the police department's recommendation, we take, the police department has done a, given us a recommendation as to what schools need to be lit up and what time they need to be lit up and things like that. And so when you see lights on at schools, that's based upon the evaluation that the police department has done. There are some areas where, and I'm not the expert on this, but there's some areas where it's better to be pitch dark, because any perpetrator can't see where they're going. But there's other areas where it's, where it's very advantageous to be lit up. And so those are those areas where we make those decisions based upon safety and security. But if we have a leeway, the lights are off.
On the inside of the building? I can understand the outside, but...
Oh, I apologize. Was it the inside of the building?
Yes.
There may have been still construction, I don't know, but that should never happen.
Yeah. So what's the possibility of sharing that position with the city? Or is there too much to do on the Board of Ed's?
The position, we believe that the position is a full-time position, and I also believe that in order to continue the synergistic services, it needs to be a full-time position.
Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I guess the, well, the Finance Board, they, they looked over your budget pretty, pretty well, and they just felt that they wanted to cut you $100,000. And I was wondering, do you have any idea what it is that they, what they, why they wanted to cut $100,000 from what you requested?
The major piece was the school resource officers. We had requested two, I had to think for a second, two school resource officers, which would, we would have paid 50%, the city would have paid 50%, so our part would have been $75,000. And that was, and that was not included then in the budget that was coming forth from the mayor. So, you know, we knew that that was the case, so we, that we've taken that, that was the $75,000. And actually, you see that that's not reflected on the sheets that we gave you this evening.
Yes, I see that.
Right.
I have a question for the, excuse me, the security coordinator. Well, currently, right now, we're short one resource officer from being able to cover the high schools and the three middle schools. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we're short. We have two resource officers that are dedicated to the two high schools. So that's two. And then we have two others. One splits between Harborside and East Shore, and the other one splits between West Shore and a small portion of time at the Academy.
So we have...
Four.
Four. But basically, the John Epton Law and Warren High, and then the three middle schools.
Correct. And the Academy.
And the what?
And the Academy.
Okay, and the Academy. But we're, so we only have four.
Yes.
So this security coordinator, he could basically fill the role as one of those resource officers, right?
Well, our, we would not be hiring a Milford police officer. The SROs are sworn Milford police officers who are specially trained in school resource. So the position that we are requesting would be a civilian. However, a job requirement will be a law enforcement background. Most, if not all, of the districts who currently have dedicated security directors or security coordinators are former or retired police officers, state troopers, or FBI agents. And so that's, that's what our, that's what our job description will be, is that there has to be a prerequisite of law enforcement background.
My thought was that if we were to say to let's, if we just hired another resource officer, and then out of all the resource officers we have, we promote one to be our new security coordinator slash resource officer, and give him maybe a stipend for the extra duties. I was just thinking about that, because we'd be kind of getting maybe, you know, two positions for the cost of one. Is that, has that ever been a consideration?
Alderman Veccharelli, quite honestly, no. A school resource officer has specific responsibilities for the school that they're in. They become part of the culture of that school. They know that, they know the teachers and the students and the families inside and out. And so what we'd be doing is, we'd be, we'd be hiring another school resource officer, which we obviously think is a great value, but it would be specific to that school. And to give somebody a stipend and say that you're also responsible for all of the other responsibilities that are now required of school districts in the state, it just couldn't be done on a stipend basis or a little extra time afterwards. A school resource officer is dedicated to its students, its staff, and its families. We're talking about a position that is district-wide. Quite frankly, a person that's only dedicated responsibility is the safety and security of our buildings and the systems that we have in place, and to do all of the new things that the state requires us to do, and really, we need, we need to do. Public Act, I don't, probably getting a little bit further than your question required, but Dr. Fieser touched on it. Public Act 13-3, after Sandy Hook, put into place a tremendous amount of...
I'm satisfied with your answer now.
I'll shut up.
Okay.
Thank you.
My, my other thought here was that I would like to commend you for being able to do this, you're doing this reconfiguration and trying to put us back to the K through five and the three elementary, or the three middle schools. And I really think that the community is looking forward to that, for a number of reasons. And when I look at, you know, how you crunched the numbers here, I mean, we're talking 5.1 new positions out of, to do the entire thing. And if I look at this right, you know, we're, we're less than $300,000 in basically putting that together with the savings. So, I'm pretty impressed that you were able to do that. My, my question is, next question is that, the, do you have an idea of what the total wage contractual agreement cost is from last year to this year for, you know, your, basically all the employees, whether they're, they're teachers or non-teachers? And, you know, do you have like one just, I mean, is it 150 million? You know, I mean, what would be the contractual wage agreement that you have to cover for this budget?
Sure. Well, if, if you look at, in your budget book, in the Roman numeral page eight, that, that basically breaks down the major categories of the budget. And wages, total salaries are up this year over last year's budget, a little over $800,000, or just more than one and a quarter percent.
So $800,000, that's pretty much everybody?
Yes. That is everybody.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, you know, you've come in with a pretty lean budget, when you have the contractual obligations, and to be able to do the redistricting, you know, with these schools and stuff. I would like to commend you on a job that is well-done, and being able to put our system back in line, I think, the way the public wants. So thank you.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, through the board. A comment and then a question. So the school operations budget is $91 million, but that does not include the health insurance contribution amount, which is almost 20, 20 million. Also, it does not include the school debt, which is almost 5 million. And then we have school nurses and other benefits, which is over 2 million. So we're really at, as far as the cost to the taxpayers, 118 million. So I just want people to understand, it's not really 91 million, it's really close to 120 million, 118 million is the cost to the taxpayers. But my question is, the health insurance, and I knew you were going to ask, you knew I was going to ask you this, Jim. As far as the health insurance, is there anything that's going on with that as far as trying to keep the cost down at $20 million and increasing every year?
Yes, on a couple of fronts. First, I know your, your passion is health and wellness. And we've, we've joined with, or we've had discussions with Human Resources Director Tanya Barnes to join in the city's health and wellness group. And so Board of Ed employees will be joining in that, in that effort and supporting that. Specifically, though, what we, what we do to help keep this number under control is through our, through our contract negotiations, we've been successful in this past year in increasing the premium cost share that our employees contribute to the health insurance fund. Each, each of our groups is, is, goes up at least 1% per year in all of our contracts that we currently have. Just as an example, right now, our teachers and administrators are between 17 and 20% premium cost share. We've, probably the most significant gain that we've made, or two gains that we've made in bargaining with our bargain units, is we've redesigned our plans so that there's greater co-pays. And in addition to that, we've now introduced a health savings account, a high deductible, a high deductible plan. We began with the teachers, and in the teacher's contract, it's an option. But we, we settled with, I won't name the bargaining groups, but we've, we've settled with another bargaining group where it's optional for all current employees. But new, all new hires will now be in a health savings account plan, an HSA. They will no longer be in the defined benefit plan that we have with Anthem Blue Cross as we know it today. So we have that now in, we now have settled with two of our groups that... So we, we have that now in, we now have settled with two of our groups that that's in. We have tentative agreements with two others. So the HSA is the, it's, it's the, it's, it's the future of healthcare as we know it right now. And that, over time, it's not going to be immediate, but over time, is going to be probably the biggest cost saver to the health insurance fund over a long-term period of time.
Thank you. So just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, so that's a mandatory now for all new hires?
In, in those bargaining groups that we've settled?
In those departments?
Yes.
What's the response on the optional HSA? Has anybody jumped?
It's, it's been slow. It's, it's been very few people in the, in the MEA, it's, it's a handful of people. But in, we know that the people that are in it are happy with it, and we, and we just believe that as we continue to promote it, and it will self-promote itself, because for, for some people, it doesn't work, but for, for other people that are generally healthy and, and don't use the health, don't need to use the health services, this is a savings account that they can, they can take advantage of to use for other kinds of medical needs or just keep it in their health savings account until they retire and it, it will build up over time. So it's, it's, it started off slow in the optional groups, but we believe that, we truly believe it's going to be building. And as the new employees come in and, and, you know, and as that number grows, it's, we eventually will be out of the defined century preferred plans as we know them today. It's going to take 30 years, but we'll be out.
Thank you. That's a good move. I think the city should take note of that, on, on that, that side as well. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Either to Dr. Fieser or Mr. Cummings, when the reorganization was taking place, or redistricting, I think, I think it, I'm talking to, there was a term that was thrown out that was relating to programs. Am I hearing that correctly or did I not understand that or misunderstand it? So when they were redistricting, they were taking into consideration programs? Could you elaborate on that further, please?
We committed to, by 2016, having two, like special kinds of programs that would move middle through high school. We haven't decided on that yet, but for the sake of conversation, if we were to say that we wanted to have theater arts, I'm just pulling that out of the hat, that, that would go through the middle and high school, what we would do is, is we would begin in sixth grade and ninth grade and then add each year, so that then there would be that kind of a specialized program for students, any student that, that went through the high school.
But that didn't have anything to do with, with redistricting?
Well, no, it did in the sense of that program was a piece that was part, that was discussed at length, quite frankly, by the board, and that was one of the things that we, that was agreed to because it was something that really emerged from not only the committee, but from a number of parents who really wanted to see, was there a possibility of, of some other specialized kinds of programs? The other thing that we committed to is to phase in, in the fourth and fifth grade departmentalization, so that you would have all fourth and fifth grade teachers teaching language arts. But then in addition to language arts, if I was really strong in mathematics and really wanted to teach math, I could teach language arts and math. Somebody else could teach language arts and science or language arts and social studies.
I think years ago, we tried this, we, we had some type of, of initiative this way because we were always trying to do something that would enhance student performance, but it really didn't have anything to do with redistricting, did it? I guess I'm confused on that concept.
So I think you're speaking perhaps to the, what we call the program rooms and how many we needed in each school, which relate to music, art, resource rooms, computer labs, the need to have rooms for OTPT, the need to have space for band instruction, things of that nature. That might be what you're speaking of?
Possibly, because I couldn't understand why that would have had anything to do with the control of the redistricting.
Because it dictated how many classrooms we needed in each school to accommodate those services and those courses.
But still, if you're on the other side of town and you were going to Orange Avenue, there's no other choice, you had to go to Orange Avenue, it wasn't going to be dependent on what the program was going to be in that particular school as to where your kid was going.
It, well, it, it dictated how we redist, how, how many classrooms we had to, to, how many we had to work with for the regular classrooms.
So it had something to do with it, but not as much as I thought, my understanding.
But we did also speak a little bit, we, we had conversation about the desire to, and this is part of, of, you know, a decision that was made last fall, the desire to look at enhanced programming at the elementary level. For instance, science, upping the rigor of our science program and perhaps having a dedicated science lab in each school, that type of thing.
Thank you. I just have an observation and a concluding statement to, to make. To the people who are looking and, and viewing this program tonight, this board meeting, other than the people who have kids in the school system or associated with the school system, on the summary of major budget savings and reduction sheet that you had given us, savings in the Board of Education budget is an extremely abstract concept. In one, one hand, we're saying, we just saved $2 million. The bottom line is that we just increased our budget by 2.1%. That's rhetorical and I don't need an answer to that. The other thing is that I'm, I'm kind of disappointed, I'm kind of disappointed in the fact that it cost us 140, around approximately $140,000 in consultant fees to, I guess, reorganize, redistrict. And it was an additional 6,000 or 7,000, as I remember, when the mayor made a recommendation or just said something about possibilities of going to K6. It hit the papers and everything else, going to K6 and seven and eight, and we spent more money disproving that portion. I just thought that the consultants, in a way, could have given us, I mean, we're back where we were seven, 10 years ago, with K5, six, seven, and middle schools, six, seven, and eight. And I just thought the consultants could have been more creative in their alternatives to present to this school system, which would have given us more options to choose from, and in my opinion, would have enhanced student performance to a greater degree. So thank you for your efforts in your meeting tonight. Thank you.
Any more questions for the board? To the Board of Education staff? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Fieser and your staff and Ms. Glennon for your presentation and all your informative answers to all our questions.
And we'll get the information to you, to the two who were not able to answer.
I was going to ask you, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to recess?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We're, the, the leadership and the department heads and the mayor will get together on future dates to be announced for our next session. Everyone will be notified.
Yep. Mr. Chair, through you, there are five sessions listed where the Aldermanic Chamber is reserved. I will work with you, Mr. Chairman, as well as the rest of the, the board leadership, and make sure that we notify you, the board, in advance so that you can prepare. We have to check with the folks from the state and see where they are. We just recently, yesterday, received the appropriations budget from the General Assembly, but we will have to work with our actuaries and some other folks to make sure that we are well-positioned to present to you our final numbers and those technical corrections that our finance director is making as we speak. And we will agree on a date to conclude the budget deliberations so that you folks can adopt a budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One of those five reserved dates, so the next date, I believe, is May 6th.
So we're going to be recessed until future notice. Thank you.